I would entertain a motion to allow Bill Meyer and Matt King to participate via phone. All in favor?
Aye.
Mallory. Who's that, Mallory? Did you put me in? Just look on there.
I don't think, I only have two on the line. Okay.
Mallory.
Is it Mallory? Did you call phone number?
Yeah.
No, not do that. Okay. So, we're gonna begin with speakers. And as is normal with thirty-four minutes, we're gonna limit it to fifteen minutes. And we're gonna have five speakers. And so, we're gonna go in order of sign-ups. So, beginning with Kirk Allen. Kirk, are you here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Please take your time on the stairs. We're out of the seat. And the rules here is that we allow three minutes. And we've time to gabble at two and a half, so you know you've got about thirty seconds to go.
Thank you. My name is Kirk Allen. I'm the co-founder of the Eppert County Watch Dogs, who are local government accountability, 501(c)(4). A few years ago, I attempted to speak at your meeting, who was met with what I would consider childish attitudes and arguments as to why I was breaking your rules and trying to exercise a statutory right to speak. Never mind the fact that those rules at the time violated the law. Rather than listen to the message, the board at the time chose to defend the defenseless, your public comment policy. I recall one board member making a comment in passing, "Who does he think he is?" If that board member is still here, I will tell you who I am. I am the person who tried to prevent you from committing a crime. How many of you are aware, the law says those who violate the Open Meetings Act shall be guilty of a Class C misdemeanor, with the exception of certi-training requirements? The reason we came to that meeting was to make the point your public comment policy violated the Open Meetings Act. Instead of listening, you chose to obey the law. I'm confident that both your organization, our organization, and your state's attorney had better things to do than deal with a request for review with the AG over an Open Meetings Act situation. Sadly, you violated my right to speak and refuse to even let me explain how you violated it. A state of lawlessness begins with ignoring and trivializing our laws. The legislature felt it necessary to make OMA violations a crime. One would think elected officials who took it both to uphold our laws would recognize that includes the Open Meetings Act. As some of you may know, the AG found you did in fact violate the law by not allowing me to speak and having a policy that required people to sign up several days in advance. It should not have taken so long to fix something so obviously illegal. One of the biggest complaints we get about this county is your restrictive fifteen-minute public comment policy. With a three-minute limit per person, that equates to five people being able to voice their concerns for a county of two-hundred-and-sixty-four-plus-thousand people. That is disgraceful, and the people deserve better. I urge you to expand that time to no less than thirty minutes with the ability to expand it if necessary, so that the people's voices can be heard. "We," the "people" means nothing, but your rules unreasonably limit their voice. We deal with local governments all over the state, and your actions are consistent with what we see way too often. Do as you please, rather than what the law says you can do. How many board members have actually read the county code as it relates to your powers and duties? If you've not, you should. Doing so, you would find numerous problems with what you're attempting to do tonight. We are Dillon's Rule State. Learn it. You have three types of powers: those granted in express words, those necessarily or fairly implied in or incidental to the powers expressly granted, and those essential to the declared objects and purposes of the corporation, not simply convenient but indispensable. With that in mind, if there's any reasonable doubt whether a power has been conferred on a local government, that power has not been conferred. This is the rule of strict construction of local government powers. It's called Dillon's Rule. Step up and do the right thing, and simply follow the law. It's the rulebook you agreed to follow. If you can't do that, please resign. Whoever's behind this meeting tonight, I urge you to withdraw your motion and answer this.
I'm John Kraft, co-founder of the Eppert County Watch Dogs. And I came here this evening to talk about this meeting and the proposed ordinance. Elected officials should strive to follow established laws and their own ordinances. That is what the electors expect of them. I'm reviewing Madison County ordinances. I found there's a four-working day requirement to have an item placed on the agenda that must be delivered to the chair by noon on the fourth working day prior to the meeting. I think you can all count that didn't happen. Also found language indicating it's the chairman who chooses his chairman pro tempore, even though there's no such thing, no title in this county. There's no authorization for a chairman pro tempore. When reviewing the county's code, I found new authorization for a chairman pro tempore for counties under township organizations, which means there is no statutory authority for such a position in Madison County. In counties authorized a chairman pro tempore, the statute specifically authorizes the pro tempore perform all the duties of the chairman during his absence or inability. That's not Madison County. That's counties under commission form of government. No such language exists in counties under township organizations like Madison County. No language exists for a county vice chairman either. I did find the vice chairman term mentioned twice in the county's code and prescribed that the vice chairman's one and only duty was to serve in the place of the chairman at any meeting of the county board in which the chairman is not present. That doesn't mean do a list of twenty other items that you can dream up. Vice chairman doesn't exist, and he can only take the place of the chairman in a meeting when the chairman is not present. Additionally, your proposed ordinance seeks to grant the board the authority to appoint a chairman pro tempore and a vice chairman pro tempore, neither of which are authorized for this county. Should you consider granting yourselves the authority to appoint a vice chairman, a plain reading of section 2-1,003 of the county's code indicates you lack any appointment or election authority of a vice chairman, because the Madison County Board Chairman is elected by the people and seventy thousand of them. You can still somehow elect a vice chairman or appoint one. You can only take that action at the meeting, the first meeting following the month of election of county board members. That's December. That's not July or August or June. You don't have that power to begin with. You don't have the power to appoint vice chairman pro tempore. Your Madison County ordinance is correct, and then the chairman picks his vice chairman. And actually says chairman pro tempore, but that needs to be changed, vice chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kraft.
Should you choose to have one, then I urge you to withdraw this proposed ordinance.
Again, I want to remind the speakers, you can leave your notes or speech with the county clerk to be added to the minutes.
A snapshot whistleblower uncovers evidence of corruption. County Board prematurely fires whistleblower based on hearsay and over objections by the chairman, who wants an independent investigation. More allegations against whistleblower, leading to a two-year expensive criminal investigation. The result? Cases closed, finding no basis for lawsuit for charges against the whistleblower. Whistleblower without his job and his good name files a lawsuit that is ongoing. The initial evidence of political corruption forgotten. Somehow, this board is laying the blame and expense for this debacle and chairman Prinsler. You see, those who stand up to do the right thing often stand alone. The crowd takes that opportunity to throw stones. Those on the sidelines, who are eager to identify with the group, decide that if someone's being pelted, they must have done something wrong, so they pick up stones as well. This board must divest Prinsler of his power as a way to regain control, but they are forgetting the most important participant in this relationship: the people of this county. This is a republic where people are sovereign, and elected board members are the public servants. Your duty is to carry out the will of the people, not to create your own coup. Twenty years ago, the board won the right over the board to elect the chairman. This change meant that the chairman was answerable to the people and not bound to a self-serving minority of the board. An irresistible maneuver, I suppose, since we're witnessing it here tonight. We sovereign people elected chairman Prinsler in 2016 and in 2020 to carry out all prescribed duties and responsibilities placed under his authority. This board does not have the right to brush the people aside and nullify the effects of our vote for chairman Prinsler. Prinsler has always stood for the taxpayer. He blew the whistle and spread the phone, who went to prison. He reformed an investment scheme and saved county money. He led the fight to defeat the sales tax proposal, and he fought to place a referendum on the ballot for the people to have a say about the percentage limit to which they can be taxed. Many other counties have already passed such a referendum, but this board does not want to handicap their abilities to get the most tax revenues that they can. They have opted to deny the people this vote twice. Must one always look for an advantage to extract control? Is that an honorable way to govern? Control should not be the goal. Strategic maneuvering should not be the method. The goal of governance in this republic must always be inclusion of citizens, not exclusion.
Thank you, Mrs. Ripsy.
Transparency, a purpose in place, should be the method used. Do not vote for the resolution. Line yourself with your oath to service the public.
Next, we have Speaker Catherine Ramsey. Please take your time coming down the stairs.
Hi, I'm Catherine Ramsey, a woman. Thank you for letting me. There's a difference between legal and law. I don't understand why I have to be here today. I'm a very busy woman. But when I find that corruption and unjust is happening, I do speak my truth. I know that Kirk stands for the men and women of Madison County, and he goes up against the corruption. And he doesn't abide by all of those shareholders that are funding campaigns. Nope. There are at least twelve people here that might be doing that, correct? That's what got our country into the mess that it's in today. And look, plenty of people in office that are going to do what is right and just for the men and women of this county, and not for what is right for their pocketbook. Now, I might just say, this all came about because some people can't play nice in the sandbox, so I'm gonna be your mom and let you know that the most adult thing to do is to take your child diapers off, and start playing nice, and come up with solutions. If you got a problem with the man, then you sit down and you talk it out, and you find resolutions to solutions. I've been illegal for over thirty years, and that's how we do it. And I negotiate with all kinds globally. And I have always been successful in all of my negotiations. Maybe you need to hire me to help you negotiate. So, I asked the board members, all of you, for evidence on why I'm here today. Not one has given me any evidence. See, evidence is an opinion, because opinion matters zero. It's corruption, and I don't really give two rats about an opinion. I want evidence. So, show me the evidence, or you vote no, or you don't even vote and you take this off the ballot. To blame someone publicly with no evidence is called slander with intent to cause harm. That's a trespass on law. To each person, you can be held accountable individually liable. The adult way is to work together. If this is about, it's a P-tow, putting it on the ballot, I don't know why. Any one of you, let me remind you really quick here, your service to us. We're your master, not the shareholders that are campaigning your funds, which should be limited anyway. I don't know why you wouldn't put P-tow on the ballot, but you vote no, illegally, and I'm gonna repeat that. It's illegal what you're doing. And, by the way, copper notice is law. It's been in the law. I mean, in the law, very well. And you didn't get a proper notice. So, that's illegal. So, we'll look into that, we'll look. But transparency is, you should be giving us the evidence.
Thank you, Ms. Ramsey.
Thanks.
Next, we have Matt Conduce and Dwight Kay. They are giving their time to the next signing person, and that is Mrs. Georgia Yost.
I'm Georgia Yost, and I live in Wood River. I have lived in Madison County for fifty-nine years and remember the days of the political machinery. Those of you who are older, remember the names. About twenty years ago, there was a big debate on whether the chairman of the county board should continue to be elected from the board or by the people. The debate took about one to two years and finally decided in 2003 by the voters. By the margin of about four to one, they said that they wanted the chairman to be elected. From what I read, the resolution, or ordinance, or whatever it's called, was given to the chairman Friday at noon before the Fourth of July weekend. Most people haven't seen it or even heard about it. Maybe you've had it much longer than I, than I don't know. Maybe you just got it. Had you studied it, or do you even understand it? I just wanted to say that if you pass the resolution, or ordinance, or whatever it is, you will undo what the voters decided in 2003. And you're doing this over the Fourth of July weekend? That doesn't even sound right to me. Okay? Now, I would like to say some words about the property taxes. I pay property taxes. And personally, I would like to vote on the P-T-E-L-L tax caps. I don't know that much about it, but I can learn. And I think the county board should let us vote on it. And I think most people think like I do. Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes. Before we go any further, I would like to, I would entertain a motion to allow Valerie Duclaff to participate in the meeting by phone. We have a motion. Sir, give it back in. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Very good. My goal this evening, this is an unusual meeting, and I want to just be clear about what my goal is. My goal is to provide in a fair and orderly way. This evening, I will begin by making several rulings of the chair. And don't worry, you will have ample opportunity to make motions to appeal these rulings if you choose. I will begin by reminding you that I am the chair, and I am presiding. Please do not speak out of turn, and only when I call on you. I will recognize you to speak, but only if you raise your hand or signal to speak. I will do my best to call on you in order of you raising your hand. I am asking now everyone in the room, including in the gallery, to silence your cellphones. Be civil and professional. Before we can begin, I've distributed a paper ruling from the chair, so that it will be clear.
Mike Clavon.
I'm sorry. Okay. One more time. Please keep your comments on the subject at hand. Mr. Chairman, the back row does not have a copy of your handout. So, I'm asking everyone in the room, including in the gallery, to silence your cellphones. Please keep your comments on the subject at hand. Be civil and professional. Before we begin, I've distributed a paper ruling from the chair, so it will be clear to everyone what I'm saying. I'm trying to be polite and put things in writing. Again, in the interest of order, I will begin by ruling this ordinance or resolution out of order because it's black notice, copper notice. If you could show that on the screen, please. So, I ruled that this is an invalid meeting because the item or items were not on the agenda within the proper timeframe. In other words, notice is improper according to the county board ordinance 30.02-G, which requires us four working days. Notice was given at noon on Friday, so that's a half working day. Tuesday and Wednesday are two working days, so that's only two and a half working days of notice. Moreover, the agenda was changed after eleven o'clock on Saturday, with word "resolution" changed ordinance. The notice published in the Oaklandville Intelligence said resolution. So, you can see the citation there. So, I'm making that ruling, and I would invite anyone who would like to challenge the ruling of the chair.
Chairman, I would like to make a motion to table this to thirty days.
Table or postpone to a future date?
Postpone to a future date.
Well, we have to, if it's postponed, we have to decide on a date. If it's table?
Table.
Table. Okay, we have a motion to table. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing that, roll call.
Excuse me, what are we tabling?
We're tabling.
A ruling?
Well.
Table, table, table.
Okay. You mean this?
Can we get a ruling from the state's attorney's office?
No. Excuse me, I decide you're speaking. Let me just clarify with your background. So, you are tabling my ruling? Or, well, it's, okay, well, it's, we're not, we're not at that point where the motion, where the motion is being introduced. So, right now, we're just, we have a ruling. Would anyone like to challenge the ruling of the chair?
I would like an opinion from the state's attorney's office, it would be pretty easy under court's take.
Well, first of all, I'm gonna ask the state's attorney, who do you represent?
So, it's my opinion that my office...
Mr. State's Attorney, who do you represent?
I represent county people, not the county.
Do you represent the county board?
And its officers, but I'm not...
Do you represent me?
Not in my official capacity.
In my official capacity?
Can I address?
No, I'm asking the question before we done. It's very important. Do you represent me in my official capacity?
Take the rock. So, my office has reviewed procedural...
Mr. Hayne, I'm asking you to...
Answer the question, boy! Do you represent us?
Question, please, to the state's attorney.
No, Mr. Our state's attorney has to clarify who he represents here. Mr. Hayne, you have publicly endorsed this motion, or, I'm sorry, this resolution or ordinance, whatever it's called, publicly, and therefore, that is adverse to my official interests. So, I will assert right now that you do not represent me. I have asked for independent special representation, and I do not have it.
I understand that's your opinion. Mr. Malone, my office has reviewed procedural concerns raised by the chairman. He's raised them before. After a review of the county's policies, applicable to our law, we believe, affirm that the county procedures were followed in calling and noting this special session. And any action that the board takes at this special meeting relating to the purpose listed on the agenda will be valid. As to whether 30.02-G was violated, it's our conclusion that an entirely different section of the ordinance that applies, it's 30.02-C, that controls the procedure for special meetings. That part of the ordinance states as follows. "Special meetings of the board shall be followed when requested at least one-third of the members of the board. Such requests shall be addressed in writing to the clerk of the board, and shall specify the time, place, and purpose of the meeting. The clerk shall make such notice to board members and the public, as is required by state statute." What is required by state statute? Two days. It is undisputed that the chairman and the clerk have actual notice and acknowledged receipt of the special session agenda and proposed ordinance last week, which would be approximately five calendar days and two business days prior to this special session. As such, my legal opinion, that notice here was entirely procedurally correct. So, if there is a motion to, to challenge the ruling of the chairman on the floor, it's my legal opinion that that, that motion would be lost.
That's just a notice of the meeting, not the item on the agenda. That requires four days.
I would invite anyone, if anyone would like to make a motion to overrule my ruling that this is invalid meeting because black notice...
It is also very clear, as an additional point of instruction, it's also very clear that invalidity is never recognized. Let's say there was a clear violation, which I, no, I mean, good, there's not at all. Let's say there was a clear violation of mere procedural rules for the county. It is very clear and undisputed in any legal analysis, in any legal study, that that does not invalidate the actions that the board takes in that meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Hayne. Thank you for campaigning.
Don't go ahead and break the rule down.
Excuse me, excuse me. I'm inviting the board, the board has the right to challenge my ruling, and I'm asking if anyone would like to make a motion to challenge my ruling. I'm trying to be fair to you today.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to challenge your ruling.
Okay, we have a motion for Mr. Foster to challenge the ruling. Do we have a second? We have a second from Mr. Stocktonborough. Any discussion?
What is the vote?
Okay, the, we're about ready to have a roll call, though. So, this is, Mr. Foster made the motion to appeal my ruling. Mr. Stocktonborough seconded it, so if you're voting yes, that means you agree with Mr. your appealing the ruling, okay? You're challenging the ruling. You disagree with the ruling. So, roll call. Okay, if you vote yes, you're challenging the ruling of four days. So, yes is where you're not favoring being? No. I made a, I made a ruling that the notice was improper. And so, by voting yes, you are, you are overriding my ruling. So, if I voted yes, you're, you have the right to overturn my, rise my ruling, but the two-thirds vote.
Mr. King, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Duclaff, how do you vote? Ms. Duclaff, how do you vote? Mr. Myers, how do you vote?
No.
So, that my ruling is, is overruled? Okay. So, at that point, I would, I think it's, I'm gonna go to number two. I just look to the rule that I am sending this to the Government Relations Committee based on 30.02-G and 30.02-H. Because particularly, particularly in 30.02-H, it says new business items shall be referred by the county board chairman to a committee, he or she... county board chairman to a committee he or she deems appropriate for consideration. So I feel that's what I must do, because I feel that that's what the ordinance instructs me to do. Now, I would again invite you to overrule that rule. Yes, Mr. Blunt?
And I'd like to make a motion.
Why? Is that the attitude? Mr. Chairman, would you just have the press stop talking? Because he's an attorney. I saw his hand wave, and asked him to quit.
Mr. Blunt, I haven't yet invited Mr. Hayne. I think that's the point, that I haven't yet invited Mr. Hayne to speak. But I will invite Mr. Hayne to speak on that topic.
Okay. So I think either the board could choose to overrule this ruling, but I think the ruling itself is invalid. The whole of special session is not controlled by 3002-H, it's controlled by 3002-C, and the agenda for the special session was properly noted. Stating both the place and purpose of the meeting. This is not new business. This is rather the sole business that can be conducted as a special meeting. The chairman frankly has no powers to unilaterally remove an agenda item from a properly noted special session. It's just an invalid action. So in my opinion, in my legal opinion, as the parliamentary reporter, the agenda item is still, despite what the chairman has just said, properly before this body, who may take action upon a motion and a second at any time.
Thank you, Mr. Blunt. Any further discussion? I'm sorry, do we have a motion to overrule the ruling?
Overrule.
Mr. Walters, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Sotter. Any further discussion?
Again, vote yes.
You are overruling my ruling. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Myers, how do you vote?
No.
I guess I'll put it up in just a moment. Let me get to the book. Ms. Duclue, how do you vote? Mr. King, how do you vote?
Yes.
Valerie, how do you vote? Valerie, wasn't clear here in our...
Let me...I'll clarify. A vote yes is to overrule my ruling, and a vote no is essentially to agree with it.
Ryan, how do you vote?
No.
I can't agree.
No.
Ms. Blackbird, Mr. Babcock, Ms. Duclue, how do you vote?
No.
My...okay, 18-7. So at this point, and I will let the motion come forward on the resolution, but just as going through this and getting this out of the way, and I would invite number three, let's see, put number three up on the screen, if you ever want to see. My third ruling is that I'm ruling this new resolution or new ordinance out of order because it violates the Illinois County's Code, Section 2-GAS-1003. First, according to the county code, the term pro tem should only be used by counties under the commission of government. Can you hear me? Okay, start again. Third, I'm ruling this new resolution or new ordinance out of order because it violates the Illinois County's Code, Section 2-GAS-1003. First, according to the county code, the term pro tem should be used only by counties under the commission form of government. Counties organized with township government, such as Madison County, should use the term vice chairman. That said, the only power given to a vice chairman by state statute is to act during a meeting when a chairman is absent. In other words, when the chairman is present, the vice chairman has no power. So, would anyone like to challenge that ruling? Make a motion to challenge the ruling.
I would like to hear what Mr. Hayne says.
Mr. Hayne, would you like to make a comment?
So this is not even a ruling procedure. This is not a ruling procedure. There's no need for a motion to overrule the ruling. This is a disagreement on a legal conclusion. And that's not on the substance of it. It's not procedural ruling. The chair has no power to make it. Again, the item is properly before the board upon a motion and a second. But let me explain to you why it's an erroneous ruling. My advice is that this legal...this proposed ordinance is fully within the power of the board. This has been my advice to board members for over a year. This also has been my advice to the chairman. In fact, I have drafted last March and sent to the chairman a legal memo, which I'd like to pass out to remind all board members of what I told them a year ago, and then also the chairman. This legal memo regards the board's authority within board matters in a township form of government. You do not have any county executive form of government, but a township form of government. In a township form of government, the allocation of powers internal to county administration is up to the board. And there's been a recent court case on this that clarifies the issue very nicely, and it's Hayney versus Winnebago County Board. In this case, the court ruled quite recently, just two years ago, that Winnebago County, similar to Madison County, does not have an executive form of government, which enumerates the statutory...instead, the county code enumerates the statutory duties of the county board chairman. Winnebago County does a township form of government, just like Madison County. Winnebago County also has an at-large elected chairman, just like Madison County. Nonetheless, the county code vests the great majority of legislative and administrative duties in the county board. Also, as we have previously noted, and I'm quoting a court case, however, the county board has the unfettered discretion to modify the duties of the chairman, except to the extent that those duties are constitutionally enshrined or provided for by statute. This ordinance does not disturb any statutorily granted powers. In fact, it specifically preserves them. All it does is relates to how the board manages the board's own business in terms of county administration, personnel issues, appointments only to board offices, et cetera. And so, in my view, this is more apt for a legal dispute. This is not a procedural motion, so there's no need to invite you to have a motion and second to challenge the ruling on the board, because there is no procedural ruling. But nonetheless, I do think...
There is a ruling.
Is that a circuit court ruling or an appellate court?
Fully within the power of the board to do.
Which court made the ruling?
That's the county. I can give to you.
Let the public know now.
It's the appellate court of Illinois, Second District, June 2020.
Was it a rule 23?
Since the chairman...
Was it a rule 23?
I have to speak.
Was it a rule 23?
If they speak, it will be removed from the call.
Okay, let's go now. I'm inviting, to be fair to the team, I'm inviting the county board to make a motion overrule the ruling number three.
I'm the parliamentary justice.
It's right there.
This is required.
I'm the chairman. I made a ruling. If you want to...I'm inviting you to overrule the ruling. So would someone like to make a motion to overrule my ruling? First, the overruling of the ruling.
I can't hear someplace. Two people talking, I can't hear both of them.
I'm ruling the motion...I'm ruling this resolution or ordinance, whatever it is, out of order because it violates the Illinois County's Code. I'm trying to be very clear here. I've given everyone a copy of this. So I'm not trying to delay things. If you would like to make a motion to override my ruling, I'm inviting you to make that motion.
Mr. Holliday makes a motion.
Any second? I'm sorry?
Second.
Ms. Wehart, second. So we have a motion and a second to overrule my ruling, which is your private. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Myers, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Duclue, how do you vote?
No.
Mr. King, how do you vote?
Yes.
Fourth, I have one more ruling, and then we'll go on.
Seventeen eight.
We want to see who voted.
We have one.
Yeah.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and put up my fourth ruling here, just on the screen. And this is shorter. I'm ruling this resolution out of order because transfers...because it transfers powers and duties away from the elected chairman to county administrator, and this requires the administrator's agreement and the personnel committee to change his job description and his compensation, since this would obviously increase his workload. Again, give this in writing so you can understand it. Would anyone like to challenge this ruling?
I'd like to hear the opinion of the county.
Mr. State's Attorney, what's your opinion on this?
In my legal opinion, this is, again, fully within the power of the board to do these ordinance. And whether or not this county administrator agrees to it, or however the job duties are changed, ordinances change how county board business is conducted. So again, this is all allowed in terms of the county. It's all allowed because the county board is the ultimate authority for how county administration runs in a township form of government. Any other questions?
Very good. Any other comments, questions? Again, a motion...okay, I entertain a motion to overrule my ruling. Would anyone like to make that motion? Mr. Holliday?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I came here...
Could we have a second before we discuss?
Put my name on that letter so we can have a hearing.
Yes.
Now I have a my agreement. I have a hearing. When I put my name down, I said I may or may not vote the way this goes. I may vote against it. I want to be aware of that. But I'm not even getting to hear any of the evidence that's being brought.
Well, that'll come back. We're just...
Then I think the people need to hear what was going to be said this meeting.
Well, first, Mr. Holliday has a motion. We'll get to that.
I don't think this is a legitimate motion. I'm a chair in a few committees, these aren't.
Well, I made a ruling, and I'm inviting the county board to overrule my ruling, and so Mr. Holliday made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second, Mr. Sotter. And so, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call. And this is, again, a vote yes is to overrule my ruling. Mr. Madison, we will get to the resolution on the agenda next.
Mr. Myers, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Duclue, how do you vote?
Eight.
Could you repeat, Ms. Duclue? I apologize. Ms. Duclue, your vote was unclear.
Ms. Duclue, we cannot hear you.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. King?
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
Ninety-six.
So the motion will be over. Here, I would invite for motion, bring in the resolution as the agenda. For Mr. Foster, to move to entry of...is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Wehart? Okay, any discussion on this motion? Yes, Mr. Gray.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, today we consider amendment to change the structure of how government functions in Madison County. We do this...
Keep it, please, this speaker. Uh, let's get going to the microphone, please.
This is in the immediate aftermath of a contentious primary, and days after we all took time to honor our country's independence. The normal process of this board is to send an item to committee to be discussed and deliberated on. Taxpayers then have an opportunity to reach out and let their voice be heard. And then we bring up the item for discussion and a vote. This is not an everyday business item for the county board, and it's not gone through the traditional channels. It's a very serious thing to change the structure of our government, especially when it's being done without the vote of the taxpayer. We must be mindful of the precedent that this sets when we start making laws directed specifically at one individual. As board members, we are obligated to consider both intended and unintended consequences for taking action. I understand the motion is a lie, but I do not believe this is the time or the place for this decision. I would be voting no, and I ask that you leave the center.
Any other...Mr. Babcock? We have a motion to table. Do we have a second? Second. We have a second to table for 30 days. Similarly, a motion to postpone for 30 days. Well, to table, okay. A motion to table. Mr. Babcock made a motion, Mr. Madison, second. A motion to table. Any discussion?
I will do it.
Hearing none, roll call. A motion to table for 30 days. Yes would be in agreement with that. A motion to table for 30 days. No would be a disagreement.
Mr. Myers, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Duclue, how do you vote? Ms. Duclue, how do you vote?
Ms. Duclue, Mr. Babcock made a motion to table for 30 days, and Mr. Madison seconded that motion. It's on the floor. Roll call.
Eight, wait.
Ms. Duclue, did you say yes? I don't want to...it's not a legal question, I'm sorry.
How do you vote?
I abstain. Thank you.
Mr. King, I don't think...you have to have a reason for abstaining. You have some sort of a conflict of interest? You have some sort of a conflict of interest? Mr. King, the ordinance does not allow you to abstain. Unless you have like a financial...
No.
Motion fails. Motion to table fails. So we have the motion, we have the resolution on the floor. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Guy.
Yes, members of the board and the public. My name is Chris Guy. I'm a Republican from Maryville, is that Maryville, Collinsville, and Glen Harbor. I'm voting against the ordinance tonight as I support the voters in Madison County that chose to elect a county board chairman.
You go, Chris.
Mike, can you hear me all right?
No.
Turn all the microphones up so I can hear you.
Trying to get the microphones. This one doesn't work. Can you hear me? Speak louder. So, members of the board and the public, my name is Chris Guy, for the public. I'm a Republican from Madison County, representing Maryville, Collinsville, and Glen Harbor. I'm voting against the ordinance tonight as I support the voters in Madison County that chose to elect a county board chairman. The county board chairman position was created to be a voice and a vote for the taxpayers. It was just two, less than two years ago, that our county board chairman was reelected to a four-year term. To a four-year term that expires December of 2024, which is another election. The taxpayers elected a county board chairman to be their voice and to be their vote. Silencing the voter's choice in the middle of his term goes against the wishes of the voters that elected him to serve. This isn't about offending Mr. Prentzler or anybody. This is about protecting the chairmanship. The Republicans elected the chairmanship. Think of what would Donald Trump do. Now, think of the decisions that he made that in Washington would disagree with. He would have loved his tripped his powers. I'll be voting against the ordinance tonight. Thank you.
I would just like to say that I'll be voting no because of the chairmanship. It has been put to the position of the voters that they elected chairman, be a good veteran different. I've had the wrath of you and some of your people against me when I ran for reelection, but you learn to live with that and you've learned to work with people on the other side. I'm a Democrat. I've learned to work with the Republicans and vice versa. You do not strip the voters of their rights to elect a chairman, and that was my biggest concern when I saw this ordinance. Yes, there have been things that have taken place that the voters need to know what has happened. And you are not a saint, you know that yourself. We made mistakes and we try to rectify those because we serve the people, not our own concern. So that's all I have to say.
Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Sutterborough.
If this were a popularity, I guess it's obvious what would happen. This should never have happened if we had had cooperation at different levels, responsive at different levels. Someone asked for evidence. May I address the chair?
You address the board.
Okay. I had a meeting with Mr. Prentzler on June 28th. Whether you recall that or not, I guess I can't address you. But every board member was called in and at that meeting, one of the things that was...
Mr. Sutterborough, I, I would have to jump in. I didn't meet you on June 28th.
Well, I have the, uh, my email with me that I responded to that meeting on the 29th. And I have had no response to my email. I, you know... So, June 28th, forty years. That's 21. June 28th, 21.
Oh, forty thousand, twenty one.
During that meeting, you said you were wanting to direct all of the appointees to these various boards to rotate the auditors because you felt there was a possibility of the auditors colluding with the different agencies. There was no evidence of that to my knowledge. But anyway, if it has, I know you have the title CPA behind your name. I have had that also. I practiced ten years. I don't think you practice at all as a CPA. You've had to test to remember to graduate. The effects of that have been rendered far greater. And first of all, I have no personal drink with it. I'm, this meeting is because of performance and the effect and how the voters of Madison County need to know what is going on. So, within my, I am from the Alton area. The, first of all, at the, uh, Lewis and Clark is a very major institution over here. Apparently with that persuasion, there was three new people elected there. Keenan was a conservative member on the board, and that conservative member is now serving as the resident of Lewis and Clark. According to newspapers, that person had completely yielded to a tax fraud. That's, the newspapers had no first evidence of that. That was another one of the agencies. They changed from a local CPA firm to a CPA firm out of the state. In the case of the airport, which is very close to me, that persuasion ended up with their CPAs being changed to another CPU firm out of the county. I don't feel that there is a, a major collusion that has to be addressed in rotating the audit. Again, I had ten years, I audited some major corporate farmers around here with even record and that is W.R. Grace, which I had part of the agriculture of town of W.R. Grace. There is no good reason, excuse, there are very limited reasons for rotating the audit. The purpose, and what my email states, we should be concerned with the quality of audit. That quality can include rotation within the audit firm, but in audit, which I have conducted many of, I don't know how many you have, but there are things in the audit papers that are carried forward. It makes it an efficient audit. It is not a good idea to rotate auditors without reason, just to say they're a little eager to audit. And that rotation is perpetuated by your instructions to the appointees that you have made. The, the point is, this could have been avoided with some responses. I didn't get a response to my request here. I hear others say they didn't get responses. As an individual, you have good friends, and I don't, don't want them to be demeaned by the fact that we disagree with some of your performance audits. Apparently, the five of the, if I recall from the paper this morning, it said five of the elected top Republicans in the county also supported this resolution. Is that enough correction? There's, it was in the paper, I think, the last, and it gave them by name. I don't have yet a reference to that name. I, I, you don't support, you don't mean the other, you're supporting you as a friend.
Voter. 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 Voter.
Good God.
This man was elected to let him speak.
Those five people that supported the resolution are also elected by the Madison County voters. So, you know, they are supporting it. There's an old expression going back, follow the money.
We are. How many people vote you in?
There's a very common expression, Mr. Chairman, the purpose of audits are to... The purpose of an independent audit is to follow the money, to state where the financial bad is at. We should be concerned with the quality of audit. I requested in that memo, email to you on the 29th of June, that we should have an audit committee, the same as any major corporation. Every major corporation that I dealt with had an audit committee that did supervision and had functional ties with auditors throughout their organization. They were, they worked with, that was, they worked with ten brand auditors in the taxpayer audit. We've had changes more than once. I mentioned here, I've mentioned airport, I've mentioned Lewis and Clark. Don't have the names of them written in front of me now. But we should not be changing all these people. They are, yes, you have a powerful voice. And you don't, uh, these people have responded to that and have mind to mind changed, and in the mind can perfection change how businesses conduct, it's important. So, I have to say that I will have to vote yes for this resolution. I think the person that asked for facts, those are some facts that I presented. And the other thing, in terms of, you want to say hearsay, I commonly get responses. They bring matters to your office, but they don't get a response. So now, that's hearsay, but we should have avoided this meeting by having better cooperation. We had, when I first interviewed you, we had very good energy. I thought it was good for both of us. And I think this should have been avoided. The voters that were here, they say they're not your friends. Well, I hope that they are your friends because, everyone?
Thank you, Mr. Sutterborough. For, for the record, Mr. Sutterborough, I have never accused anyone of colluding or even suspected collusion. I have, I never gave you instructions on how to vote. And, but I do favor the rotation of outside auditors. Everyone knows I've always favored that as a policy, which, and I won't get into that, but that is true. I do favor the rotation every five or six years of an outside auditor. I do. So, any other comments or questions? Hearing none? Yes, Miss Sweetheart?
Yes, I've heard tonight a few people say that, um, one of our speakers said that when you stand up for, um, for the right thing, sometimes you stand alone. And I couldn't agree more. We, I wanted to draw attention, there was recently a letter that was written by you, sent out about me. It had belittling and false, um, statements. And one that I find most offensive is what you think finds a woman. In your letter, you stated what a woman should be, married. Implying that I am less of a woman because I am not married. This is disturbing for many reasons. But what I want to point out here tonight is that I have dedicated thirty-plus years to working with women who find themselves in very unfortunate situations. And I find it very disturbing as you feel these are not real women because they aren't married or they're choosing to leave, to leave a relationship. And, uh, Mr. Chairman, I just pray that your daughter never finds herself in one of these situations. Also, I want to add that I feel the need to defend myself and other women who are maybe divorced or single moms, that we can be successful. I'm successful, I have two very successful daughters, and my ex-husband and I co-parent very well together. But the job here that the board has is to work together for the better of Madison County. And when you continue to insert your personal thoughts and beliefs into matters, that hinders our ability to move forward. The letter that you sent out is signed, Chairman. Thank you.
I didn't want to respond to that. I do regret that letter, but I'll tell you where it came from. Because I first wrote a letter of endorsement for a gentleman by the name of John Janik. And I said, John Janik is a man, is, is what a man should be. Married to his wife for forty-nine years, four kids, twelve grandkids. I then continued to use that, that template for an endorsement letter.
Too expedient to think about what you're...
Because you've not been married to a woman for forty-nine years? I said, the misogynistic hate you're coming for your administration. I just pointed this point. I, I, I wrote that letter from Mr. Janik first. And I said, this is what a man should be. Uh, and then I continued to use that template, Miss Sweetheart, I did not intend to disparage you all, uh...
But Mr. Prentzler, what were, what were, trying to explain to you, for two years, you've explained to your, your misogynistic and homophobic hate.
We kept it out of the news base.
Very good. Any other comments?
Mr. Commissioner, not my issue.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Foster.
It's been ten days since Granite City Sales announced its release. While you're campaigning, the rest of us have been meeting with political officials trying to figure out what we're going to do to help the thousand people move with their gun. We have to get a statement here often. This is another example of how you failed to lead this county moving forward. What you've worked tonight is a very small amount of what this board has had to contend with, with your behavior and your actions over the past thirty-six to forty-eight months.
This conspiracy.
I ask you to call and vote.
When he first asked this, anyone else have any comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Walters.
Thank you, Chairman. And I appreciate all the speakers and everybody here tonight. A lot of you have made some good comments, and you said that, one person in particular, I liked her, they said, they said that we need to work together. I've been the pro temp for five and a half years. I begged and pleaded with our chairman to talk to these board members. He doesn't do that. Matter of fact, when he first got into office, it was so bad, he couldn't get anybody that he wanted passed. So I went in and I said, Mr. Prentzler, please sit down with some of these board members and find out what they're frustrated about. So he did. Then he started going well. Then he starts appointing people. I said, Mr. Prentzler, have you called anybody to try to help get this person appointed? No, it's not my job. I'm sorry, Mr. Prentzler, this never would have happened. I came to you January of last year, begged you to start calling and talking to the board members. I, I've said, I've heard the rumors about this for more than six months now. Please, work with us. Help us, help you do the right thing. And you chose not to do that. I mean, you know, you know, we talk about fair, and you try to run a fair meeting. This is the first time I've ever seen you a mile and proud. This is the first time I've ever seen you a mile and proud to ask questions to our state's attorney. That's not fair. That's not what it is there. Matter of fact, they should be escorted out of here if they're running a meeting. Now, I don't want people tossed out, but if they continue to ask questions improperly and you don't es, have them escorted out, you're not running a fair meeting. I'm sorry, Mr. Prentler, I've defended you for five and a half years. I've taken bullets, I've been stabbed in the back by these people, I've done everything I can to help you. I told you about this. I said, Kirk, we can stop this, let's get it done, work with us. And yet, how many board members did you call to talk about this meeting?
I will, I will answer that question.
Okay, but this is what I mean. You have not, you, you, this is something.
I've called many and I've sent emails and texts.
Okay, emails and texts, you need to call, pick up the phone and ask. Because I sat down with you and I've expressed to you things that we can do to stop this. Because I called you, or I come into your office, not because you called me. And I think, and, and, I still consider you a friend. But what we're voting on tonight is because of the lack of your communication skills, the lack of you working with us as board members, the, the numerous amounts of people that have filed lawsuits, numerous amounts of people have had to resign because of some things that they did that were so horrendous that I won't, I refuse to say. And this is why we're doing it. We're not taking away your powers. We're going to oversee more of what you're doing because we're sick and tired of lawsuits after lawsuits after lawsuits. They don't help you with people. But this board, and our board, has asked you for information. You, you give them articles. They need, they, they ask you specific questions and you, you, you don't give them answers. I mean, you know, if you talk about backdoor referendums, and, and there are a lot, and I agree with you on this, and some of them, like some of the schools. But there are school districts in this county that PTELL will not touch. So, it, it, it sounds great, and, and, and it sounds like it's something we should do, but let's get the information out to the, to these board members so that they can, you know, if you want to have a vote, then get the information out to the board members. But this, this, tonight is not about PTELL. I had five people call, why are you, I mean, they said, Mr. Prentler said it's about PTELL. I'm like, this has nothing to do with PTELL. This has something to do with the fact that this, that you refuse to work with anybody. I mean, no offense, Mr. Prentler, I think I probably work as many hours a week as you do. I think a person that is paying six figures should be in that office, or they should be going to meetings. They should be in that office eight-thirty to four-thirty. If I recall the two gentlemen that we did let go, and the state's attorney or the attorney general did not clear them, said that they did nothing wrong, that's incorrect. I recall, without even telling the board, you approved their, their unemployment benefits, without asking anybody on this board. They lost their jobs twenty-six to one, but you went ahead and approved their, their unemployment. Without asking, now, whether they should get it, I'm not saying whether they should or shouldn't have. Nobody on this board or the prior board knew anything about it. That's the kind of stuff that we've been telling you, stop doing this. Call us, ask us. You may have found that the board probably might have said, yeah, go ahead and pay them their unemployment benefits. But this is why we need more oversight over you. I've been, I've been oversighting you for five and a half years. And, and, and I, as a matter of fact, I'm more than happy to resign as the pro temp. Because I, I, when you won't listen to me, the guy that you picked to be your pro temp, I don't know how you think that you're going to work with the rest of this board. We want, I work with them. And I'm sorry, Mr. Prentler, I am voting in favor of this, and I'm not voting in favor of this because I think everything's going crazy, but what you've done and your lack of inability to talk to anybody on this board is why I'm voting yes. And I listened to what you said, but unfortunately, most people here tonight have not been involved in the inner secrets, inner things of what goes on in this county. You haven't seen what we've seen. And if you have, you were one of them.
Yeah, any other comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Madison.
I made a nice question, and a lot of things that I've heard from you tonight. The first one's up in the ground here, clearly, I think you're a leader. We fought together on a lot of issues. Here's my problem. As I read our county code and state statute on counties like ours, it's not an executive-style county. It is a township-style county. And the way I read it, the county board chairman is to implement the policies and the votes that the, that the board puts through, and to run the day-to-day of the government operations along with county board administrative, uh, the, the county administrative. But my problem here is that you seem to view the office as if it is an executive-style county office, where it is separate from the county board. In my view, you're supposed to do, follow the wishes of the county board, not dictate to the county board, just like as if you were a committee chair. You can't rule your committee, they would run rampant of you because they don't know. I don't see the powers that you believe that you have. And I'd like to ask the state's attorney if he agrees with what I'm saying.
Yeah, I think it's rather vague, Mr. Madison, in terms of that's, that's.
We either have executive style or we have township style.
We obviously have a township style.
An ex officio member of committees, can you sit in on committee and vote to make a vote?
You know, that's been a fact important in the state's attorney's office.
You are an ex officio.
Yes, yes, I mean, I think, yes, yes.
If you can do that, it makes you part of the same branch. We don't have three branches of government in the counties in Illinois, like they do at the federal level. And this is no impeachment by any means, this is, we've had a lot of problems with lawsuits that have, that have come back and cost the taxpayers a lot of money. And we do ourselves as fiduciaries responsible for the taxpayer's money and not to waste their money. Lawsuits are a big cost here, but the votes have anyhow to keep you surprised. But we're trying to limit those things by just discussing with, we don't want to circumvent the will of the voters at all. Now, I don't view this as doing now, I view this as taking back a little of our own board responsibilities that we've given to the chairman, we can still do ourselves. So, I'd like to hear from the state's chairman to see what you do, what the chairman's responsibilities are in a township county, or are they similar to an executive?
Nick, I, I think we have, we have the ordinance, which everyone has the ordinances in terms of what the powers and duties of the chairman are, that's clear. I don't think, I don't think we have time tonight to get into a philosophical discussion of that. Mr. Hand, I am recommending you. This is a philosophical question, and I don't think it's, it's really. And we obviously have a township form of government with an elected county chairman, we do not have a county executive form of government.
We don't have a what?
We don't have a county executive form of government.
You should view yourself as the executive, where you can work against the board instead of pushing them.
I think that's your opinion, we, I mean.
I've been, been here with you the whole time.
Okay, that's your opinion. And that's what we're here to do, share opinions and make comments, yes. Mr. Patcock? Mr. Patcock?
I want to share something that I brought up earlier today.
Sure.
I want to share this with.
If you could speak more to your mic, please.
Can you hear me?
Not very well.
Can you hear me now?
You're going to have to really, uh, speak broadly.
Can you hear me now?
Not too well, you're just going to have to do your best and speak broadly.
Can you hear me now?
A little better.
I am absolutely fine with this situation.
Can you hear me at all? No, I can't hear you.
Mr. Patcock, would you like to come up to the speaker's platform? Because your mics aren't working very well. You can turn off and use my mic, because I think this one works a little better.
I'm addressing the board, and I appreciate each and every one of you listening to me. I know we're all in a quantum, a situation where we're not sure who to believe, what to believe, and how to respond to it. And I also speak at the same time to those that are in the audience, it looks like a square crowd, but my, but I want the public to know the truth, based on what I've seen and what I know. And I think it's important for me to just read it, so that you can understand the complexity of this situation. And I'm talking about the voters that are here to support Kirk, and the people that work with Kirk every day that understand the other side. And I don't do this out of any malice, I didn't have a race to run. I don't do this out of anything helpful to the chairman whatsoever. What I'm sharing with you is information regarding his behavior, sometimes. You can say it's one-sided, that's okay. Mr. Chairman, you indicated in your July fifth press release to the media, and I quote, and this was just yesterday, by the way, that I got up this morning and read, which just basically inclining, before the recent June twenty-eighth primary election, you, Kirk Prentler, endorsed some Republican candidates for county board. Some of those challengers, defeated incumbents, and what is happening here tonight is payback. That was your words, sir. I fully disagree, and here's why I know that that's not true. The county board has been seeking to pass this resolution for a full year that I was aware of, and several board members have asked the other board members not to proceed. I know this for a fact because I was one of those members that asked so that this is not due to any election that took place. The reason we are here tonight is because of the lawsuits we have had against Madison County residents, quote-unquote, the taxpayers that you referred to them in your press release. Before I go further, I want to say to all those in the audience that I apologize to you because I told you I wasn't voting for this resolution. The reason was because Kirk was duly elected and should have that right. However, Kirk has stated in his press release just yesterday that this is due to an election, and that is categorically false. I'm telling you it's false because I know that they wanted to do this a year and a half ago. And I'm talking about the board, wanted to do this, put this in place a year and a half ago. This is not because of an election where four incumbents lost their seats. This has been an absolute concern for many years, and the full county board knows it as well as the county-wide elected official. The only reason I have changed my mind is because of Kirk's email this morning, which again blamed this on an election. Here are the facts, and I, I hope you understand what we're dealing with inside the chair, to all you that are in math tonight. Here are the facts, of which I know. While being appointed to this position by Kirk, of which I appreciate, and the board, on a twenty-four to four vote in favor of my appointment, I thank Kirk and the board members who voted me in. The issue before us tonight has nothing to do with the word impeachment. In other words, he will still remain and retain his power to appoint board members as well as appoint others to the board, such as the Madison County Transit. That's just one example. This appointment power has not been removed from Kirk Prentler. That's a fact. That's a fact. What we're discussing is whether or not the county board will take back some responsibility, mainly hiring, firing, and some other personnel issues that require a very procedure-oriented process that truly requires a skill set of trained human resource department personnel. And here's why. When you became treasurer, and I hate even bringing this stuff up, but it's the truth. When you became treasurer, you promised to cut the budget thirty percent in thirty days. Do you know that promise? And in the process of doing so, as part of that pledge, you began to fire employees to cut costs, which, in that regard, is very admirable. Everybody would respect that, and they'd say you kept your promise. Unfortunately, just so you could fulfill that promise, one of those employees was Linda Dunagan. Mrs. Dunagan filed a lawsuit under the Americans with Disability Act in federal court. The jury found in Dunagan's favor, and the lawsuit ultimately cost Madison County taxpayers six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, just one lawsuit.
Mr. King, we're here, background, we're talking, if you could, if you're, uh, well, if you could.
When you became county chairman, when you became county chairman, you insisted on appointing two individuals as county administrator and IT director over the objections of many county board members. Later, you appointed Kristen Peshard to the position of community development. She too was appointed over the concerns of several county board members. Kristen Peshard was terminated in two thousand seventeen. She filed a suit in federal court alleging sexual discrimination against one of our board members. We settled that suit last year at the total cost of the county of over one point three million dollars. The process of handling this termination could have resulted in a better outcome if handled properly. The former administrator and IT director were terminated after a special task force investigated. The county board voted twenty-seven to one to terminate their employment. Even though you were only required to vote during a tie-breaking vote, you took a very unusual step as county chairman and insisted that the records show that you would have voted no on their termination. And that's your prerogative. You have the right to do that, sir. Currently, the former administrator and IT director are suing the county for wrongful termination that thus far has cost the taxpayers a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and climbing, and climbing. Why were they fired? With no end in sight. In addition to these costs, they and their families have known associates filed freedom of information requests to nearly every department in the county that requires the massive attention of the assistance, assistance state's attorneys to respond. After all of this, you made a conscious decision to endorse, and one of those is, which is your prerogative, there's nothing wrong with that, for county treasurer. And that's okay, that's your decision. But they're suing the county, and we're up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in fee, in law fees, to number six. In addition to all these wrongful termination lawsuits, we face another suit filed by a former highway engineer that you unfortunately have fired. He is claiming that you fired him over the objections of a supervisor at the recommendation of your former deputy administrator. That wrongful termination suit has cost the county eighty-seven thousand dollars thus far in county. And might I add that nothing remotely singular has happened from any of the county-wide elected positions in recent history. In other words, we have five, six other county officials that are elected, and there are no lawsuits regarding these individuals. no lawsuits regarding these individuals and unfortunately, many regarding themselves. My business has a fiduciary responsibility to my clients to put their best interests ahead of my own. If I violate that responsibility, my license will be revoked. You have put politics ahead of good policy by continually hiring politically connected people. Unfortunately, Kurt, the taxpayers whom you claim to represent have had to pay for these lawsuits with their hard-earned money that cost so far two point two million dollars in rising. All we are seeking to do is mitigate these lawsuits in advance by taking over hiring and termination of all Madison County employees. To be clear, to the public that is here, we are not taking away his power. He will still have the power to chair meetings, submitting apportionment plans, appointments to Madison County Transit, replacing vacancies of any countywide elected position, appoint to the Board of Health Advisory Committee, appoint to the Fire Protection District, call in special meetings, appointments of county board members. His pay stays the same, it doesn't change. We, as a county board, represent the taxpayers. When we get sued and do nothing about it, it requires action to fix the problem. This is exactly why we are seeking tonight this resolution. And I say this with huge rigor, even possible repercussions because of it. But at the end of the day, all we're seeking to do is hire and terminate people inside the county without him doing that so that we can control any future lawsuits regarding this.
Any other comments or questions before we go? Hearing that, roll call. We're voting on the resolution, the resolution or ordinance, and stated both ways, to amend the personnel policies for county board appointed officials and department heads and certain Madison County ordinances. So, roll call.
No.
Ms. Duke, how do you vote?
Ms. Duke, we cannot hear you. Can you speak more clearly?
Ask the voting, don't vote me on. Right now.
Ms. Duke, we are voting on the resolution for ordinance to amend the personnel policies for county board appointed officials and department heads and certain Madison County ordinances.
Mr. Clever, would you have your vote?
Ms. Duke, did you say yes?
How do you vote?
No.
Ms. Duke, would you like to have another opportunity to speak clearly?
No. Motion carries nineteen-six. Motion passes. So, any unfinished business? Any new business? Hearing that, I would like to make a motion. I'd like to vote in second. All in favor?
Aye.